Good evening and welcome to the Special Committee of the Hole for Monday, May 1st, 2023. Clerk Pecora, please, call the role.
President, this evening we have Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Carter, Counselor Piazza, and Finance Director Yuhas.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with new business or referrals. I, due to some late-breaking developments, I'm not bringing the Park Avenue sidewalk to the Committee of the Hole or to the Mayor and Council for tonight. That'll come to you in a future, at a future meeting. Okay, we'll move on to Parks and Rec, Eastern Point Beach Sidewalk. Mary, if you could come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we spoke last week, we have, we were taking out a bid for the sidewalk at Eastern Point Beach. There's an area of the sidewalk that's been compromised. We, the bid closed on Thursday, the April 27th. We received three quote, three bids from three different companies, and the recommendation is to go with Concrete Slabs by Drab from Blueberry Hill Groton. Their quote came in at $15,000. There is another area that we weren't, we're not sure if it's just a cap replacement or are full, so we have a contingency of 5,000, so not to exceed $20,000 to get that repaired.
Okay, questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I have a question. Well, one of my questions is more for the Mayor's office, I guess, which is, do we ever have the, the Highway Department repair sidewalks in the park? Or does that always fall under Parks and Rec Department?
You're talking about in the beach?
Or any, any parks?
Well, hold on, let's be careful here. Let me, let me, let me clarify. If it is a sidewalk that is adjacent to a road, Highway would do that. If it's in the beach property, in the past, it has not been done by Highway, because it's not in a highway, it's at a beach. And we have sent that out to bid, and it has been bid before. For example, when I got here in 2017, we had an issue with undermining, and Slabs by Drab did that contract as well. And so they were the low bidder here, and the intent is to use them. So this is not precedent-setting. This is typically what they have, what they do. I did talk to the union today, and they're okay with Slabs by Drab doing the Eastern Point Beach sidewalk.
Okay. My other question is for Director Hill. It says that we received three bids. Do you have the amounts of the other bids?
I have a, I, oh, yes. I can't remember the name of the first company, because I couldn't say the name, but their first, one bid was 208,000 and change. Another one was 40, I believe the other one was 46,000 and change. And Kevin, Concrete Slabs by Drab came in at 15,000. And they bid the whole, we had a walk-through. Concrete, Concrete Slabs by Drab was the only contractor that actually came to the walk-through to see what the actual project entailed, and then took measurements and everything else. The other two companies did not come to the walk, it wasn't a mandatory or pre-meeting, but the other two companies did not come, and we didn't have any questions from them prior to the closing of the bid.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I appreciate, you know, this is a city-owned, city resident-owned business, so I'm happy that that's the lowest bidder, so it doesn't, you know, create kind of a conflict for us. And it's always good to give business to city residents. Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know that he's, he's on. I wanted to make sure the clerk knows that Counselor Norris is on. Okay? Counselor Carter?
Yeah, so, I guess the last comment's just, I guess, just rectified that, because at first you didn't say, you didn't say it went to the lowest bidder, but according to what you just said now, it went to the lowest bidder.
Correct.
Yeah, but at first it didn't. So, um, my question initially was, did it go to him because, or sorry, did it go to Concrete Slabs by Drab because they're what I guess ground utilities would say a preferred vendor, right, and they've worked with us before? Or because it was the lowest bid, and you're saying it's, it's the lowest bid?
Correct, it's the lowest bid, yes.
Yep, that, which is good. Um, the second thing I'd have is, can we, um, and just to touch upon, um, not to take money out of people's pockets or businesses out of people's pockets, but, um, to touch on, um, what Deputy Mayor Depot said, um, would it be cheaper to, in the future, to consolidate services and have our guys, our own department, do it?
I guess that would depend on how it would be budgeted in the highway, the Public Works budget, because that's different, done differently than my budget. They go through the town highway department, or town council for their approval, and that's part of their roads budget, so I'm not sure how that would, how they would have to budget that, because it's not attached to a road.
I understand. Um, but overall, right, say overall, like, say, say, um, in the upcoming years, say the, the, um, the Highway Director allocated money to quote-unquote "parks" properties, right, and to their budget. Um, and I know you wouldn't have the answer to this, if you know it would be cheaper or not, but is that something that we can look at in the future? Because if the, um, if the Highway Department can, can, um, could rectify any issues or, or, or complete tasks instead of bidding out?
Do you want to address the overhead? Hatter, do you, do you want to address this?
Sure, like, like Mary said, um, there, the funding, it's like, does come through the town, so it would have to be broken out. But I think right now, the other issue, not to go into a lot of detail, but is a capacity issue with the workload of the Highway Department, with what they have scheduled for upcoming paving jobs, catch basin work that needs to be done, and so forth with it. So I can't speak for that department, so it would need, it would need to be.
Similar to, similar to bidding out the job that they actually, that's on their agenda, which is near the monument, that's what you're saying. So if we can bid out, then they're totally fine with, I get that, they're totally fine with doing that, but is that, say, like, money-wise, i- if it saves any money for them to do it, is it a significant amount or, or not? Because I, I do, I do know the Slabs by Drab, they came in significantly lower than the other people, right?
Correct.
So you'd assume that if, if we did save money, it'd be very minimal if our guys did it?
It's, it's hard to say, and the reason why I say that, because if there's, if there is free time, then obviously that's easy to say that we're paying them be, either way. Just again, I think it's more of a capacity issue, and then need to be prepared and worked out and scheduled between the two departments, as far as how that work would happen if it could. I can't really give you an off-the-hand dollar for dollar.
But in?
But if it's not budgeted out, like currently, we have a half of individual from the highway for, for the public buildings, for this building, which is where, when they did the sidewalk work out front, that came out of that account. If it's not budgeted for and broken out, then the Highway has to charge an overhead back to the public, part of the Parks and Rec Department, which then sometimes can get costly for that budget. It's all internal.
It's very minimal anyway, but the more, more importantly, you said that the, um, the Highway Department, you spoke with them, and there's no, there's no, um, there's no resistance from the, from the union.
That's correct. I, I talked to the President this afternoon specifically about both of these, and Eastern Point Beach sidewalk is not an issue.
Okay, cool.
Any, any other questions or comments? Counselor, Counselor Sheffield?
Mary, we expect to have this, I guess, completed before the beach opens, or are we doing this after the season?
Nope, no, this is something that we are shooting to have done before Memorial Day weekend, and, and the contractor knows that.
Okay, good.
So typically, we open on Father's Day weekend, but this year, Mary is looking to open on the weekends, starting Memorial Day. So I'm gonna make sure we understand what start date is, so they need to be done by then.
So, so part of the RFP was an anticipated start date and a timeframe for the work, and the start date did have May with a one-week timeframe, so we're hoping to have it before that.
We also, based on the nature of where the sidewalk is, they have to make sure it's secured safely upon, you know, eve, every night, so that, that we don't have any accidents. You know, because there could be, you know, it could be an open, open sidewalk at, at some point, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of 5:123.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we had a, we have a motion in a second, we just discussed it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to budget presentations. Counselor Norris, just to catch you up, we are not discussing the Park Avenue sidewalk tonight.
Okay.
So we're now on to budget presentations, finance, non-departmental. Finance starts on page 29, actually 30 is the cover page, and then you get into the details on 31 and 32.
So for the finance budget, we're proposing an increase of 2.08% from 765,000 up to 781,000. If we flip to page 32, you'll see that the, the main increases in this budget are driven from the benefit side, which we've seen across the board through all the department budgets, with the 5% for the medical life insurance pension and the workers' comp and the insurances. For the operating expenses, you'll see that I kept that flat across the board through, for just the other stuff. The office supplies and advertising, that is made up of our copy release, the postage for all the AP checks, the 1095 reporting software, just general office expenses, you know, the envelopes, paper, the 1099s, W2s, and all those types of stuff come out of that line. And then the big line down below is the contractual services. The big piece there is the payment to the town for tax collections, which is just around, just under 34,000 for fiscal year '23. There's some, the proportion of the audit legal, we are in a contract negotiation year, but I feel that there's still enough there. And then we do have a little bit extra in case there are special projects, like currently we are working with Springbrook on a payroll project, where they're looking at our payroll and how we handle it with pay codes and that type of stuff. So for them, that is pretty much our budget in a nutshell. The one thing that is, comes in under every year, which we're gonna try to, to do better at, is the professional development. And there is a possibility that Springbrook may go to another version, which will be cloud-based, so I'd like to send some of the staff out to Springbrook for some training if we do go that route. And just training in general, I think we, we haven't done a lot of it the last few years across the board, just with everything going on. So I'd like to increase, the budget amounts today the same, but you'll see that it came in under in '22, and then it's projected under '23 again to come in under budget. So I wanted to keep it, just so we had it there, and I'm hoping to get some additional training.
Counselor McCabe?
How many people do you have on your staff?
There are four budgeted positions. We still do have an opening.
Full-time?
Yes. And five, five and ten myself, so, but four additions.
Counselor Sheffield?
That, that accounts for the budgeted amount, and your actual is short due to a salary person that?
Correct.
That's your short, okay.
Yep, yep, you'll see that on page 33. When you look at the FTE page, you'll see that position where it was vacant last year, and we're hoping to have it filled before the end of the year.
Any other questions or comments on finance?
Yes, please.
Okay, Counselor Norris?
Um, sell-back of time, uh, can you please remind me what that is?
That, that is in the budget in case an employee retires, and there is sell-back of vacation and sick time. I, I don't, I have employees who are eligible, but are not, I don't know if they will or not gonna retire, but that's what that is for a sell-back of any time.
So would you say within the next two months, that potentially you will have someone using the $6,000?
I don't foresee that happening. I see that it's in the estimate, but I do not foresee that happening.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments on finance? Okay, we'll move on to non-departmental, which is, starts on page 93. General insurance, actually, the details are on 94.
So we're proposing no change in the general insurance line, just based on where the actuals for '22 came in, and the projections for '23. You said, we had budget 23, 120,000, again, proposed, that, we're requesting in '24 is the 120 again. This is made up of the, a portion of the USI consulting fees, which is Chris Wardrop, who's come out and spoke to you. They're the broker firm who helps us find all the coverages and, and does a lot of work during the year to assist us with contracts and, and those types of things to keep us on point from the insurance side with any questions that we have, and then send, some of the unallocated insurance costs are there. So I feel that leaving it at the 120, we're still in a, in a good budget spot for fiscal '23.
Questions on general insurance? Okay, move, we'll move on to pay adjustment on page 97, 97, 98.
So historically, and I know this has come up in past meetings, but being a special meeting, I didn't really want to bring this section in, because it wasn't on the agenda. This pay adjustment section is something that we've historically had in the budget, where we leave 25,000 abouts on a non, on a non-negotiable year, just so there is money in case there is, changes to salaries. What would need to happen for the money to be moved out of this account, it would need to come to council for approval, because you're going from one department to another department. It's not with inside the department. We have not historically come to, to move that money. Usually, the departments, if there has been changes in salaries, have been able to adjust their budgets and keep them within, within the total expenditures under budget. So we haven't really come back to adjust that. You'll see this year, we proposed to increase that to 50,000. We are in a negotiation year, so what we'll do with negotiations is, if a contract is expiring, we will not change the salaries. We'll leave them what's contracted, that ended on 6/30/2023, and just roll those forward. So that way, it just stays the same, because we don't know what those wages will be. So that's what this line item does, is allows to put money here that's outside of the departments for changes in salaries throughout the year, mainly the biggest piece being negotiations that settle after the budget's done.
Question or comments on pay adjustment?
So, I got a question. So?
Counselor Carter?
So particularly this year, right, if there was a salary that we, within reason needed to be adjusted, you could allocate those funds?
Correct, we could come back to council. We'd, like I said, this would need council approval, because it is going from one department to another department, no matter what, if these were to change. But yeah, you could, that's what this money is set aside for, in case there's something, some sort of change that's unexpected outside of budget.
Good.
That was budgeted originally.
Right, and we have, the reason we increased it is because we have six contracts and negotiation, so we don't know what the final wage determination is gonna be, but, so that's why we have that. Anything else on this? Okay, we'll move on to public improvement?
And the public improvement, that is truly based on our debt service payments. So if we go to page 101, for the, for the city's debt service, we have principal payments of 275,000, which is the same as 2023, but you will see that the interest has gone down from 73,775 to the 62,325, and that's truly just based on the, the payment schedule. And then we've historically just left a $500 consulting service that hasn't really ever been utilized, because usually when we, if we do an issuance, it's covered with the issuance cost of the debt. But there is, just in case we have something come up, there is a little, just a little bit of money there.
Any questions on debt service? All right, moving on to contingency, 104, 105?
So you'll see that the contingency decreased to 81.3% this year. With the addition of the building permits over the last few years, we've been able to put undesignated capital funds away for, for, for future projects. So in 2023, so if we go to page 105, you'll see that we had 500,000. So 2022, we had a million, we dropped down in '23 to 500,000, and we are eliminating that out of the 2024 budget, so there's no undesignated capital that will be transferred over to the capital non-recurring funds. The other piece in this line is a contingency. Since I've been here, I'm not sure how far back, we've kept 115,000 of contingency for any unforeseen's throughout the year. If you remember, we've used that when we had a fire truck that needed emergency repair work and stuff like that, but very rarely do we end up going into that contingency. Most of the time, the departments, if they do have an unforeseen, they can, they try to work within their budget to find other areas to, to move that money around. But that is there just as, as our contingency, because as you're aware, once the Freeman vote on the budget, that bottom line is our cap. So we just want to put a little bit of a contingency, just in case something comes out.
Questions or comments on contingency? Okay, any questions, overall questions, comments on finance or non-departmental? Okay, we'll close that. Thank you, Ryan. So now we'll go into overall city budget discussion. So if you have any, any further questions or changes, either additions or deletions, we can talk about them now. We have a couple things we could do. We could either talk about them and then vote one at a time to put them in here, or, and then at next week's special cow, have the late, have the updated budget, let you look at it again, and then on the 15th, for the Mayor and Council Meeting, is when you guys will vote on the final budget. Or we can have an overall discussion tonight, and then if you have questions or comments, you can send them to me. We can then include them in the budget for the special cow for next Monday, and go through the same process. So it's, it's up to the council on whatever, whatever your desires. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I personally am not quite prepared for overall budget.
Okay.
I'd like to, now that we've done all of the department presentations, I'd like to have a week to go through and make sure that I am not forgetting something that I wanted to ask.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Carter?
Just to continue what I said last week or the week before, I think we need to look at the Parks and Rec Director's salary to see if they can do an increase, overall increase this year. Um, I think the Parks and Rec Director, um, that's, does, does more than actually her description. I think that she's also taken on the role of somewhat of a, what a human, human services director would take on, what a youth services director would take on. Um, she's taken on different, um, she's taken on different roles that could be distributed, distributed to other people, but it, it's not, because we simply just don't have those directors. Um, so I think that's something that we need to look at as far as an increase. I'm not saying what it should be, but as far as a possible increase in her salary.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the budget? Counselor Piazza?
If we were to ask questions and email them to you, do we send it to the full council, or just?
Send it to me.
Just you singly?
All right, thank you. Because what, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to get into having an illegal meeting. So send them to me, and then they will be incorporated into the budget, and then we will, I will have them so that we can discuss them next Monday. Any other questions or comments on the overall budget discussion?
Excuse me, ma'am?
Counselor Norris, you have the floor?
As we're discussing the overall budget, would it make sense that if there are any, if a council person wishes to make changes at all, that it's discussed now, so that next week, it gives time for the finance staff to look at potential changes to the overall budget, or if not, that it be nullified?
Do you want to address that, or you want me?
Yeah, we, we could do it either, either way. If we do it tonight, we'd be able to have better numbers for the next cow. If we waited to next week's cow to do all of those changes, you wouldn't see the final until it went out in your packet for the 15th meeting.
But, but even if we did tonight, if, if people, if counselors sent in additional questions or comments during the week, then that would be annotated on the budget, and we're still gonna have to discuss it next Monday. I, I will, whatever council desires, we can go either way. Or we could do a hybrid, it doesn't matter to me.
So in, in terms of adding and deleting to budget, is that a form of a motion or just purely a discussion?
No, you, well, you can do, well, you can do it as a discussion, and then next week, so we can do it a couple different ways. You can do it as a motion, or we can discuss it, and then next week, once it's in the budget, and you see the impact, we'll flag that, and each one of those will need to be accepted by this council, and we can do that in the Committee of the Hole, Special Committee of the Hole, and then the final budget will come to you on the 15th. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. So, understanding what you just said, can I put on the table some things for discussion now?
Sure, sure.
So in light of discussions we've had over the past year regarding the youth advisory committee, I guess, and them completing that benchmarking and that needs assessment, I would put on the table that we could add $2,500 to the recreation budget to accommodate potential new programs that the recreation department would have to design and implement, just in case they're not collaborative-type programs with other agencies or the town.
That's 2,500?
Correct.
Okay, and you want that as a separate line item?
Yes, because I think it would, in my mind, it would be considered for program development and consideration.
Or would it already fall under one of these line items? Parks and Rec, it could go under? Yeah, we'll get to you in a second. I'll get you next.
I think how it would work, and it's, it would, we'd end up with a sep, a new GL line item for it. However, it would roll under the cost center of programs and events, and then most likely under contractual services, um, when you, when you?
Okay, programs and events on page 86?
Yeah.
And then?
And then it would be part of contractual services on page 87.
Okay.
But in the general ledger itself, we can create a new line item, so that way it does stand out as a budgeted in the, in the detail.
Okay.
So that amount, I, I don't know if it needs to be a separate item specifically, that that's obviously up to you, the mayor, or the teachers.
Okay, but the bottom line is, you just?
Also like to discuss is adding $1,500 to the Park and Recreation Base salary projected to life force. Again, I don't know if that would be all in recreation or split to a percentage between recreation and parks and beach. That would be procedural matter for, I guess, HR and finance.
How much was that?
$1,500.
Okay.
Now, in? Now, in looking forward to the wisdom of Deputy Mayor, to cover the cost of that, what I would put on the table is that we reduce that four thousand one hundred, what is that, four thousand one hundred?
Where are you? Can you give, can you give me a page?
Four hundred dollars from finance out of the sellback of time. That is in the six thousand dollars that does not appear to be used other than the past four years.
All right, hold on a minute. All right, stop a second. So finance. Sellback of time. So how much do you want to take out of there?
The cost that, or the amount we added to recreation, which is four thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay?
I would also like to potentially add, again, up for discussion in the fire department on the safety equipment, I believe it was. Three thousand dollars.
Hold on. Uh, where are we here? What page are you on?
I believe it's page fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Okay, hold on.
Counselor Norris, are, are you looking at page on sixty-one underneath the program equipment? That was the line that we were talking about during the fire budget, that fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so you're looking at program equipment? How much was that?
That was adding one thousand dollars to that.
One thousand, okay.
So going from fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand.
Okay.
And to cover that expense, unfortunately, taking a thousand dollars out of sellback of time from finance.
Okay, so now we're to total at five thousand dollars for sellback of time.
Correct.
Okay? All right? Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor, and then you do.
Just sit after her.
All right.
So I, I agree with Counselor Norris that we should put more money into any of the projects for the Youth Advisory Board. However, um, we already added money to their budget for programs this year. And they, where is that department? And they, um, that department did not use the entire budget for programs and events last year. So the budget last year was eighty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-two, uh, last year, or well, the current year we're in. And that department only used sixty-four thousand two hundred one dollars of that money. Um, when the director presented to us, she said that she wanted to add new programs, including the Youth Advisory Board, and that's why she put an increase on that, part of the reason she put an increase on that line. Um, so while I agree that we should have more programs for that specific, um, population, I, I, in my opinion, we already added for that. So I don't see a reason to pull money. And the amount that we added is pretty close to eighty-four seven five two. Yeah, so we added twenty-eight hundred dollars to their budget for programs and events already. On, and that is without them having spent that whole budget last year. So again, I, I agree that we need to spend more money in that specific, um, vein, but I think we already added it. I don't think that we, in my opinion, we've already added twenty-eight hundred dollars to that budget for that purpose. And, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I think while the council can add money to a department, the departments within themselves can reallocate money from one line to the other. So for example, in the fire department, if they needed program equipment that was to cost sixteen thousand dollars, they can pull a thousand from a different spot that they're not using their budget.
That's correct.
And I believe that the chief has done that, um, in the past. Looking at last year's estimates and actuals, he, um, seemed to have done that in some areas where they didn't use it, like in professional development, and shifted it around. Um, so again, I think an amount that minimal, a thousand dollars, unless there is some particular item or thing in mind that we know is not going to be afforded, um, I'd be curious to see if Chief Tompkins thinks that that is an effective add to his budget. And again, not that I don't think that they need that money, but, um, it seems to me from past budgets that that department is good about budgeting and then moving money. If there's, like, he's not going to only spend fifteen grand. If he needs to spend fifteen thousand five hundred or sixteen thousand, he's going to say, okay, well, we'll shift it from this area. So, um, that's how I feel about that. Um, and then lastly, the council can make those adjustments or increases to particular, um, areas if we want. But when we vote, we vote on the bottom line number, correct?
Correct.
So when we, um, we don't get to necessarily choose. Like, we can say we intend for it to go to this line, but that department head is going to be able to shift. No.
And, and this, so let me go ahead.
Let, let me ask, I think I know where you're going with it. So for the, the approved budget, it would go to the line where the change has been recommended by the, or approved by the council. However, like you said, the department could now in turn use that money for something different to move money around within their department.
Okay. And the council does not, while we could add money to the salary lines, so we could say for finance, part-time staff, we want to add ten grand or whatever, we don't actually set the salaries for individual employees. Correct? So we could add money to a salary line, but that doesn't mean that that person that sits in that salary seat is going to get an increase necessarily because the council does not approve individual increases for individual employees.
You want to answer that? Do you want me to answer that?
Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
So you, you can, you can put and make recommendations for increases, but I have a process that I follow to, to, uh, determine and to do increases on department heads.
No, I understand the, the actual amount of what they receive, but I'm saying I have the right to say that I'm not going to approve this, this, um, approve this budget due to I don't want a increase in the mayor's, um, um, salary, or I don't, or, or I don't agree with the non-decrease in somebody's, that, that's what I'm stating. But I understand, I understand what you're, you're saying.
You're, you're voting on the budget.
And I, and I won't vote on the budget if some, if, if I don't agree with salaries.
That's fine.
That's included with it. That, that, that's a part of it. That's what I'm, I'm saying. We, we can't say what somebody's getting, but we could also make, we can make mention that we're not approving, or we are approving, just based off of salary alone.
That's true.
That's, that's all I was stating.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you finish?
Well, I, my question didn't exactly get answered.
Okay, ask the question again. Let me make sure that I answer it.
If we put an increase on a salary line for an employee, regardless of who that employee is, that employee doesn't necessarily get an increase unless it goes through the regular HR process because that is our policies and procedures.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carter?
Thanks. Um, yep, so my, um, and again, this is just referenced just for next week's, correct? Or for whatever we come up with in the next weeks. So I, um, regarding, um, Deputy, uh, Mayor's statement with the Youth Advisory Board, I think that, yes, um, there was a budget in place, but in light of some of the comments that we made as far as what we could possibly do with the Youth Advisory Board, um, one presenting two weekly movie outings at the beach, I think that is, may or may not be what, um, Counselor, um, Norris is alluding to, um, that, that will cost, you know? Um, and I think that's something that we should look into if we have the money to do it. I think that's something that the, um, city, um, could champion, and it could be like an ongoing thing as far as having weekly summer movies. And that would cost money. And that's something that the Parks and Rec Director did not budget. Um, that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, I, 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 I do agree with, um, although I do agree with the added fifteen hundred with the Parks and Rec, uh, Director's salary, um, to allocate funds as far as him trying to find funds. But you also just presented to us, um, other ways for funding as far as when it comes to, um, when it comes to, um, salary adjustments. So, um, I think that's something we should also look at as far as, um, increasing the salary of, uh, potentially the Parks and Rec Director, what we're going to pass very shortly.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding the overall city budget discussion? Excuse me, Counselor Norris, you have the floor?
So the reasons behind this is, and I, I apologize for not knowing the appropriate policies here. With the increase of the one thousand five hundred dollars to the Director's salary is, uh, not a merit, but is a base. And I don't know if council has the authority to add an increase to the base salary. This would not be considered a merit increase because that falls within the purview of the mayor, obviously. The program money, the two thousand five hundred dollars, I am looking for an expectation that the Park and Rec Director increase her number of programs and quality programs. I was out not too long ago, and I heard a comment made about recreation should not have enough money. So I want to move that out of an excuse. I do not feel twenty-five hundred dollars can give us the appropriate level of programming. One, down on State Street. Two, increase programming activities within Washington Park. And lastly, increase our collaboration of programs for youth in the city. Therefore, that's why I'm suggesting or bringing on the table that we add twenty-five hundred dollars to the budget. Also realizing that the average cost of program design and implementation nationwide is approximately nine hundred dollars. So we're adding five thousand dollars to the recreation budget. That's really only going to get us five programs, maybe six. And, um, I'm looking for, for the expectation from the mayor's office and the council that if we really want to get programs hustling and buckling down on State Street, Washington Park for youth, this is a small increase to seek. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Again, agree with the addition of programs. However, I am not a fan of increasing a budget for a department line that didn't use their budget last year. Our budget proposed for this coming fiscal year is twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars higher than that department spent on that line last year. So while that increase, the requested increase over last year's budget is twenty-eight hundred dollars, the, the requested budget is twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars over what was spent last year. So I just don't, a, and honestly, twenty-five hundred dollars compared to that number is, is quite small. It's not that I have a problem putting more money in the budget in general. If the director had spent her budget last year, I would be more than happy to increase that even higher because I do think that's really important. But I don't, to me, it doesn't seem logical to add to a budget that wasn't even used last year. And, um, obviously, there, there were reasons for it, probably, but we haven't been using that line item budget. We have not been using over the past several years. First, for, you know, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one because of COVID. Couldn't do a lot of programs because of COVID. But even last year, um, with full engagement, we still didn't use the budget. And there's going to be twenty thousand dollars, five, twenty thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars a wiggle room. That'll buy you a lot more than five programs. So I, I just, I just think that seems a little not the best fiscal idea. And I would say if that budget gets spent this year, then we increase it again next year. I do think that programs are important and that we should put money into them. Um, but I'd like to see that line item actually used by the department before we add more money to it.
Counselor McCain?
I do recall Mary, uh, the Director of Parks and Rec mentioned that, um, we were consolidating the summer program into one location, which was going to save her money. So I think the savings there would also be, um, money that would, could be used for other programs. That would be included in this budget.
Thank you. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, uh, on this, as far as adding the money, um, I can see, uh, Counselor Norris's reason for it. I mean, I know that we have twenty thousand that we can wiggle around, but I remember specifically asking her about more programs because my children were in that program. And less and less and less each year, there's less trips and so forth and so on. And she, and she did mention, I read in the notes, that it was too impacting on the parents. So I think that money could be used to scholarship parents who fall within a certain, uh, financial guideline. Um, scholarships for them in order to increase programs and trips. And I know also too that we need to reflect on it was a tail end of COVID. So I think that's why I love things. And if she's, if we can move money around, then why didn't we move money around in order to pay transportation for these trips? So I don't know if that was, I wasn't here. I don't know if that was voted against or how that even came to be.
No, what we can do is, if, what we can do is we could make these changes. And then next Monday, I'll have Mary here to talk about her budget and the impact. I'll have the chief here to talk about the impact. And if there are any other changes, we'll have those department heads there as well. Did you have a?
Yeah.
Hold on a second. Let me, let first I speak.
Yeah, as far as I think, uh, yeah, we would need Mary here to specifically dissect uh, the expenditures that, that could be utilized, uh, for any additional type of programs, you know, as well as assisting in, um, you know, for parents, for financing for trips and so forth like that. So I think, uh, that's probably the best move before we make a final determination, so.
Sure. All right, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I meant to ask this before, but, um, I was thinking maybe considering that, you know, all of us have interest in the programming part of Beach and Parks, and doing some new programs. And obviously, Counselor Piazza knows more about them, um, because she has kids and I don't. Would it be appropriate to maybe make a referral to Beach and Parks to review current programs, potential programs? How are we going to utilize this budget since it is going to be twenty thousand dollars more than she spent last year? That maybe it might be a good idea to get more people in the room to see if, um, we can help make sure that money gets utilized this year. Because I do think Counselor Piazza has some good ideas for Beach and Parks programs.
Absolutely.
And I think that that would be helpful.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. As luck would have it, we have an upcoming mayor and council where committee referrals will be on the, the agenda, and we can add it then.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the budget? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, we are adjourned.